The committee's inquiry into the operations of the approved charitable organisations under the Provincial Cruelty Animals Act nineteen seventy nine. Acknowledge the daddy people of the Our Nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we're meeting today. I pay respects to elders past, present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal Torres and older people joining us today. My name is Mark Binazak and I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. So I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants and I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of those procedures. To all witnesses, I welcome and thank you for making the time to give evidence. Starting with my first witness on the left, can you please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation, please? Start with you, Dr Wright, sorry.
By oath, I swear that the evidence I am now about to give by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And did you just state your name and position?
Oh, sorry, Peter, Dr Peter Wright. I'm President of the RSPCA, Chair of the Board.
Thank you. Mr Steele?
My name is Mark Steele. I'm Vice President of RSPCA New South Wales, Chair of our Governance Committee. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
My name is Stuart Thompson. I'm the Treasurer of RSPCA New South Wales and also Chair of the Finance Committee. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. You and Mr Wilkie, given that you've already been sworn, you don't need to be sworn on this occasion. Would any of you like to make a short opening statement?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Mr Wright?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and fellow committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to address this inquiry. As you know, I'm joined today by Mark Steele, Vice President and Chair of our Governance Committee and our Treasurer, Stuart Thompson and Troy Wilkie, our Senior Government Relations Manager. As President of RSPCA New South Wales and Chair of the Board, I can primarily assist the committee with matters relating to the functioning of our Board. Mr Steele with Governance and Policy Matters and Mr Thompson with Treasury and Financial Matters. Mr Wilkie can assist with Government Relation Matters and the evidence which has been given in previous hearings, questions on notice and supplementary responses. Over the past twelve months, we have experienced significant changes at RSPCA New South Wales, specifically in our Inspectorate and of course, the other services that support the Inspectorate function. These support services include shelter services, veterinary services and back office support to administer the historical uplift in the Inspectorate. These changes have been driven by the significant expansion made possible and necessitated by the twenty point five million in funding from the New South Wales State Government for that purpose. This period of rapid growth has brought many challenges. Change management is a challenge for any organisation, including RSPCA New South Wales. It has, for instance, required a cultural shift for our inspectors who have historically been used to working independently. Historically, many of our inspectors, particularly those in regional areas, worked alone and with a significant degree of autonomy responding to cases throughout their regions with limited on-the-ground oversight. With increased staff numbers, we have implemented more to-out operations and additional layers of management and oversight. This has been done in the interest of workplace health and safety and to strike a balance between performance management and support, we expect more to-out operations going forward. These changes are essential for enhancing both worker safety and the effectiveness of our enforcement outcomes, ensuring thorough oversight of each case and every frontline inspector. We recognise that not all inspectors have experienced these changes positively. Some experience this change to less autonomy and greater oversight with feelings that they are being bullied or harassed. We are concerned that any team member might feel this way and are dedicated to addressing these concerns and supporting our inspectors through these changes. We have invested scarce resources in recruiting and training them, in some cases, over many years. We do not want to lose them and we want them to feel respected and supported in their work. Feelings by any staff member of being bullied are taken very seriously. We are committed to supporting our staff and preventing such feelings from persisting. As a Board, we primarily do this by ensuring that best practice policies and processes are in place and are being implemented to address workplace grievances objectively and fairly. Our commitment is to respond to any bullying complaint, treat all colleagues with respect and continuously work to enhance our workplace culture and inspector operations as a part of our ongoing improvement plans. We are also firmly committed to a merit-based promotion system. We strive perfection, though we understand this is a journey. Transparency is important to us. New South Wales, RSPCA New South Wales, is subject to oversight from our members, the Board, federal and state regulations, the Department of Primary Industry, the Office of Local Government, Parliamentary inquiries, the New South Wales Court and the public. All of these have access to our annual reports, financial statements and now our thirty-four B reports. They are welcome to and do raise any concerns with us. This committee has been provided with oral and written responses to all questions raised during these hearings and in supplementary inquiries. These amounted to tens of thousands of words. We also have provided copies of our thirty-four B reports for the last two financial years, our New South Wales Government Budget Submission, Employee Handbook and confidentially our Inspectorate Standard Operating Procedures. While we do not claim to be perfect, we strive to ensure that our governance and workplace management practices are robust, ensure best practice, standards of operation and accountability. Although some people who have been unsuccessful or overlooked for promotion may not feel that the decisions were justified, we are confident that these decisions were made based on the best information available at the time and based on merit and skill sets required to manage the culture, change, peace. Length of tenure at RSPCA New South Wales does not automatically equate to promotion. We will continue to ensure that staff understand why and how these decisions were made, fostering mutual understanding and harmonious collaboration. Today, we will endeavour to answer your questions to the best of our ability. However, it is important to note that the Board oversees the organisation's government, strategy, risk and budgets. It does not manage day-to-day operations. We highlight this in correspondence when we invited to the hearing today. Many of these operational matters which have been the focus of the inquiry are the direct responsibility of the CEO and senior management, not the Board. We appreciate your ongoing support and scrutiny which helps us improve and uphold our mission to protect and care for animals. Finally, I must highlight a significant concern regarding the future funding for RSPCA New South Wales Enforcement Activities. The New South Government has not advised us what funding will be provided for the fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond. This lack of clarity, almost three weeks into the financial year, possesses a serious challenge for our planning and operations. RSPCA New South Wales has budgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five based on our comprehensive submission to government, which has also been provided to this committee. However, without confirmation of ongoing sustainability, sustainable funding from the government, we face a prospect of having to significantly adjust our operations to align with what is financially sustainable. If we do not, if we have to do this, it will impact on animal welfare across the state and our ability to enforce POKTA. The potential reduction in our environmental enforcement capacity would inevitably put additional pressure on other state agencies, including the Department of Primary Industries, New South Wales Police and New South Wales Council Rangers. Unless we obtain a substantial level of funding, these agencies will find themselves having to handle potentially thousands of matters that RSPCA New South Wales currently manages but would no longer be able to resource. We fear that this shift would substantially burden these already stretched services and would lead to delays and gaps in law enforcement. We do not want this to happen. We remain committed to our mission and will continue to advocate for the necessary resources to fulfil our responsibilities effectively. We believe that our funding submission presents excellent value for money compared to similar operations. We hope that the New South Government will enable our enforcement of the animal cruelty laws of the state to continue uninterrupted with sustainable funding over the forward estimates. The RSPCA New South Wales is uniquely placed to deliver the best animal welfare enforcement in the country and we will continue to strive towards that goal as part of our mission to prevent animal cruelty. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Mr Wright. Are you happy to provide a copy of that opening statement?
Yep.
Just so hindsight gets everything right?
Yep.
Thank you. I might start off with a couple of questions for you. How, can I just ask you about the tenure of each of the Board members? How long has each of the Board members been a member of the Board? I'll just start with you, Mr Wright.
I've been a Board member since two thousand and two.
Yep.
That was subject to the old constitution. We redid the constitution in twenty eighteen, which actually limits Board tenure to twelve years maximum and then they've got to have a three-year break.
Right.
And similarly for positions within the Board, there's a six-year limit on a position within the Board.
Okay. So when does your twelve years?
My six years-
Does your twelve years start at twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen. My position as, six years as President will be ended at this November, the AGM.
Okay. Mr Steele?
I joined the Board in July twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
I joined the Board in eighth of June twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. Do we know the start dates of the other Board members that aren't here? Do we, or I'm happy for you to take that on notice?
It'd be much easier on notice, yeah.
Yeah, sure. How many branches does RSPCA have? And then also how many members? Obviously, it's a member-based organisation. I'm just curious as to the structure.
I believe we have seven branches.
Seven branches?
And approximately five and a half thousand members. But if you want entirely accurate figures, we should take that on notice.
Yeah, I'd prefer the accurate figure.
And the other thing I would say with that, a lot of our branches, which were branches, have become sort of supporter networks instead.
Okay.
Just because of the ability to hold a President and Chair and a constitution within that. So we've reformulated some of those areas to simplify the structure.
So there was, there was problems in getting-
Sufficient numbers to maintain that core-
Okay.
If you combine both groups, it's twenty-one branches and supporter groups we've got across the state.
But only seven, seven branches?
Seven remaining branches and the rest are supporter groups.
And in, and in terms of AGMs and other extraordinary general meetings, who actually has voting rights at these, these meetings? Is it the individual member or is it the branch? How does the voting structure work? Do branches get, depending on their size, get X a number of votes or? There's obviously various ways to structure this sort of process. I'm just curious as to how it works.
Voting is by the individual members.
Okay.
The branches don't have votes as such.
No, do they have a right to send delegates to the AGM?
No, any member can, I mean, yes, in the sense that any member can attend the-
But they don't have any special standing at the AGM as a branch delegate at all?
No.
Okay.
Can votes be done by proxy?
Yes.
And who normally holds the proxy?
Who has nominated?
You can nominate who holds your proxy.
Yes.
Are you able to tell us how many votes were cast in the last AGM?
I think we're going to have to take that on notice.
Hmm.
Okay.
Along that same line, can you perhaps take on notice how many members attended the last, say, the last two AGMs in terms of individual members and also how many, how many of branches were represented at the AGMs, the last two AGMs as well?
Yes. I assume by represented you mean in person or remotely because we do-
Yeah, 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 sure. Yeah, but I tend, it's in the general sense.
The minutes of the meetings, if that's possible as well.
You would like-
Minutes of the AGMs, yes, please.
Just what, last two?
Yep.
If we could have copies of the last two AGM?
We'll take that on notice.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Just going through some questions on, or answers to questions on those.
May be helpful. We engage with our members other than just at the AGMs.
Yeah.
Both as Board and at management level.
Okay.
So we have, one of our General Managers is responsible for interacting and overseeing the operations of all of our volunteers and branches around the state and we regularly meet with the branches, meet with volunteers and engage with them both through her and directly as Directors.
Okay. How often would you say that you would do that in terms of on an annual basis? You, you as the Board directly, not necessarily the Membership Officer, but you as the Board directly?
Taking myself, this year, I attended the Volunteer of the Year Awards at Ygguna. So that was bringing volunteers from all around the state and we chose a Volunteer of the Year. Went to the Millimpor's Walk. I've visited branches. We're going to Armidale at the end of this month and we'll meet with branch members there. So, and so I would say at least half a dozen times a year for myself. I think the experience of our Directors would be similar.
Okay, just going back to the opening statement, Dr Wright, you talked about the difference between what the Board is responsible for and what the, I guess, the CEO is responsible for. But am I correct in saying that you as the Board are responsible for, I guess, the hiring and engagement of the CEO? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So any concerns about the CEO's performance would naturally have to go to you?
Yes.
Okay. In, say, the last three years, how many concerns have come to you from staff regarding the CEO's performance in any, in any sense?
I'm unaware of any questions in that regard.
Okay. You spoke about bullying and harassment and obviously your concerns around, around that. How often, how many times have the Board received complaints from staff directly to the Board about bullying and harassment?
I don't, I can't think of any, the Board being directly addressed by anyone?
An addressed, an addressed, I mean by in writing or in person or a phone conversation, email?
Yeah.
You've received nothing around these concerns around bullying and harassment?
No.
As a Board?
No.
I don't think we'd expect to, Mr Chair. We, we have a grievance policy that allows members of staff or volunteers who have a grievance to raise it internally and there's a process that's gone through to investigate and address that grievance.
Has the CEO ever raised these allegations or concerns that we're hearing about now to the Board as a matter of course or just a matter of saying, hey, this has been, this has been investigated by WorkSafe? You know, we've been asked to do X, Y, Z. That hasn't been raised with you in meetings?
I'm not sure when I first became aware of the concerns that the committee has raised or have been raised with the committee about grievances raised in the last six to twelve months, particularly from the Inspectorate. I've certainly had discussions with the CEO about those, also with our General Manager responsible for the area and the Chief, the Chief Inspector and our Head of HR. So I know about them. When I first became aware of them and how, I can't now recall, but I'm a, my background is partly as an employment lawyer, so I have naturally paid particular attention as a member of the Board to those issues.
Can I just ask, perhaps on noticing, you check, check your diaries or any notes you may have made in terms of when you, when you did become aware of these complaints around bullying and harassment and just who, who those complaints came to or came from? That would be great. I might just pass it to Mr Fang.
You also, sorry, Mr Chair, you also mentioned WorkSafe notices. In the nature of the way our Board and its committees work, I would expect those to come to the attention in the first instance of our Risk Committee because it's a, it involves an element of risk. Now, none of us are on that committee, so I don't know when they would have become first to aware of it, but if we can take that on notice.
Yeah, that would be-
I suspect it would have been raised at a, at a meeting of that committee.
Yeah. One would hope that they would then report back to the broader, the broader Board on any pertinent matters, but-
Yep.
Well, every, every Board meeting, we get a report from each of the committee chairs and we get the minutes of the committee meetings in the Board papers, so it can be checked.
Yeah, hopefully that might help you check it easy as to when you might have become aware of it, yeah.
Yeah.
I might just throw it to Mr Fang and then we'll see how we go.
Before I start questioning, I'm going to, this is the first of many documents I'm going to table. I'm just going to pass this to the staff and I'll see if they could circulate. I've got a copy for myself and nine other copies, so there should be a copy for the committee members and also for the witnesses. Thank you. Before we get to the evidence I'm just tabling, first I want to establish what the Board's understanding is of their governance function of RSPCA because there seems to be a little bit, little bit of confusion. And I note that, Dr Wright, in your opening statement, you've, I think, mentioned twice that there's a limited capacity the Board has in relation to, I guess, overseeing operations of the RSPCA. You've indicated you delegate to the CEO the operations on a day-to-day basis and you're more of an oversight governance role. Is that the way that, yes, thank you. Is that the way that you see the Board, Board's oversight of the RSPCA?
I think that, yes.
You might just want to bring your microphone a little bit closer, Mr Steele, sorry.
Sorry. I think in, in an entirely conventional way for charities and corporations. The Board is ultimately responsible for the operations of the organisation.
Yep.
The way a Board, in my experience, normally discharges that obligation is to delegate within parameters.
Yes.
And we have delegations of authority that give authority to the CEO and others within the organisation to make executive decisions.
Yes.
Some of those delegations call for particular decisions to come to a committee and then to the Board.
Yes.
And we, so that's, that's the structure.
Yes.
And then we oversee the operations of the organisation.
Yes.
Through our committees and through Board meetings that are held every two months. And we get reports from the CEO, committee chairs and other managers on the operations of the organisation. That's the formal structure.
I, I understand that and I appreciate that. So I'm just going to then, I guess, dive in a little bit more. Do you view the RSPCA as more of a charity or a charitable organisation or do you see it as more of a, I guess, animal welfare enforcement agency?
Well, I don't think I distinguish in, when you say more one than the other, I think we're both.
Okay, so that was, that was the answer I was hoping for and I appreciate that. So in that respect then, we received an email on the twenty-first of June from Mr Wilkie indicating that there was, I'll say, a question as to why we would, you know, be asking the Board to appear. You would agree though that asking the governance entity for the RSPCA that handles both charitable and animal welfare enforcement actions within that body is not an unusual thing, given we've got some concerns around the operation of the RSPCA?
I, I've seen that communication. Mr Fang, I'm not sure I would characterise it in quite the same way you just did. My recollection of it is that Mr Wilkie was concerned to understand what sort of matters the committee wanted to hear from the Board about and I spoke to him-
Does it matter?
I spoke to him before we sent that communication to make sure that we had the right Board members here to address the questions that you wanted to ask because we have ten Board members.
But we're a parliamentary inquiry, that's oversight, that's oversighting the charitable organisation's enforcement of POKTA. Should it matter?
You're not going to get an argument from me, Mr Fang, that the committee is entitled to ask questions of the Board.
Right.
And that's why we're here.
Right. So I'm now going to turn to the evidence that I've provided. Now, you'll see on the second page, I've highlighted, quite hopefully, I would have thought, some of the evidence that was given at the first of the hearings that we had. It's questioning between myself and Mr Bearden. Now, gentlemen, I already knew the answer to the question I was asking, which was what Safe Work actions, or sorry, was Safe Work involved in actions with the RSPCA? Now, looking at the evidence that I provided to you, you can see that Mr Bearden is clearly trying to mislead this committee by indicating that there was some engagement with Safe Work and denied initially that they were improvement notices issued by Safe Work until I drew him up on that very question and forced an answer from him where he admitted that they were improvement notices for Safe Work. If he was so willing to try and mislead this committee, has he advised the Board that there were Safe Work improvement notices in relation to the organisation? And if so, what was the Board doing about it?
Well, I'm afraid I reject the premise in your question, Mr Fang.
Well, you can reject it all you like, Mr Steele. It's in black and white.
Can I finish my answer?
Sure.
I don't see here that Mr Bearden misled the committee or denied that there were improvement notices.
Okay, so let's just go through this.
What he said was, I can't remember exactly if they were improvement notices, but he recalled engaging, working with WorkSafe over the last few months.
So, so you, you believe Mr Bearden's evidence that he couldn't remember if they were improvement notices? Now, Mr Steele, you've said-
No, 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 no.
I haven't finished my question yet, Mr Steele. You've indicated to me that you are with a lawyer that has workplace experience. Now, if you have Safe Work improvement notices, what does that mean for an organisation?
Well, it means that they have to improve their work practices in accordance with the notices.
Right. It's, it's not a trivial thing, is it, to have a Safe Work improvement notice?
I would, I would never say it was trivial. I think you'd need to look at the exact content of the notice-
Right. Would you expect, would you expect a senior manager of the RSPCA to be unsure if a advice that's been provided from Safe Work New South Wales is an improvement notice or not?
I don't think that's a fair question.
Why?
Mr Fang.
Why?
Mr Bearden gave his answer, which is that he-
He wasn't sure if they were safe, but he knew. He later admits that he knew that they were.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand why my evidence about this is relevant to anything before the committee.
Because, I'll explain, I'll tell you exactly why I believe it's relevant, Mr Steele. We've got questions around how this organisation is operating. Now, one of your senior managers comes to this committee and tells us that he's not sure if they're Safe Work improvement notices or not, despite the fact that he later, only a few lines down, admits that they are Safe Work improvement notices. Now, I'm asking questions of the Board whether you were advised that they were Safe Work improvement notices, what you did in relation to those Safe Work improvement notices and what your response is to a senior manager of your organisation coming to this committee having been issued Safe Work improvement notices telling us that he's not sure if they are or not.
So there were many questions in what you just said, Mr Steele.
Well, let's start with the first one, shall we? Fire off the first one and let them answer that and then fire off the second, third, fourth and fifth and sixth.
What was your first question, Mr Fang? Sorry.
My first question is, is how you feel about a senior manager of the RSPCA telling this committee whether he's- telling this committee whether he's unsure if the notices that he's been given from Safe Work are Safe Work improvement notices?
I don't accept that characterisation of what his evidence was.
How would you characterise it then?
Well, I'd characterise by quoting it.
Okay, but by all means.
All right, point of order.
I hear the point of order.
I'm allowed to take the point of order. Uh, it's been going a little while. Um, Mr. Fang does not stop to allow the witness to actually respond to the question. If we could just slow it down.
Yep.
Um, it would be very helpful.
We're limited with time.
I hold our point of audit, then we just allow a bit of breathing space. So answer, answer question, answer question.
Uh, in, in my experience of seeing people give evidence, which I've seen a lot of, Mr. Fang, uh, when they're asked a question which they'd not given notice of in advance, people's recollections usually start with, uh, trying to recall the best they can. Mr. Bearden recalled that there had been interactions with Safe Work. He was unsure in the moment whether there were improvement notices. You pressed him on it and on reflection, he remembered that there were improvement notices. I don't see anything there that is an intention to mislead, and I don't understand why anybody would even seek to do such a thing. It's a matter of public record whether we have Safe Work improvement notices.
Well, actually, no, it wasn't.
Well, it would, it would easily become one because you would ask the question and we would provide them.
Which is why.
If you think the organisation was trying to conceal from the committee.
That's exactly what I think.
That we'd receive Safe Work improvement notices, I reject that utterly.
Well, when, when was the board made aware that there were Safe Work improvement notices and what was the actions of the board?
I've been asked that question already, I think, or I answered anyway to say.
I don't believe you answered it. You were asked it, but I don't think you were given the opportunity to answer it. So I'll give you the opportunity now.
I don't recall when the board became aware of these two Safe Work improvement notices.
Can you take it on, can you take it on notice based on your, your board meeting minutes?
I suspect that, that the committee that would have become aware of them would have been the risk committee.
Can I just confirm, did you say two notices?
Um, that's my understanding from the written evidence I've seen given to the committee.
Okay, can you confer?
I can't confirm it, no, Mr. Fang.
I, I believe there might be more, but, um, it's interesting you say two. I'd be, if you wouldn't mind taking our notice, the number of Safe Work improvement notices that you've been issued.
Over what time period, Mr. Fang?
Well, whenever. I'm not sure. I mean, how many have you been issued? It's a very good question if you.
Well, um, okay.
Let's, let's go in there.
We have answered in writing before that there was two. Uh, I forget whether it was 12 or 24 months, but there was two in particular that we've responded to, uh, in writing and in previous hearings.
Okay, and how many have there been to total to date?
In the hundred and fifty years of our organisation.
Well, I'm not sure Safe Work New South Wales has been in the exact iteration that it's currently in, so.
Perhaps they've given them a timeframe, Mr. Fang, to help them.
Maybe the last decade.
I'll take it on notice.
Thank you. Um, I wanna dive in now to another issue. Um, conflicts of interest. How does the board manage employees' conflicts of interest?
The organisation manages conflicts of interest.
Yep.
By having, um, policies that require, um, employees, volunteers, senior managers, executives and board members to disclose any actual or potential conflict of interest.
Yep.
Between their obligations to RSPCA New South Wales.
Yep.
And obligations to anybody else or personal interests.
Okay, so I, I know you say.
That's the first.
Yep.
Step. Um, if they're disclosed, um, as they should be in writing, um, then they're addressed by, um, the person's immediate manager. Um, if that person is uncomfortable with them or feels concerned, then they're escalated up the chain of command, if I can put it that way.
Okay.
As far as is necessary to deal with it. Some might come to the governance committee, for example, in the first instance.
So, so it's not your expectation then that.
Sorry, I haven't finished my answer.
Sure.
That's one way we deal with it, through the conflicts of interest provisions in the codes of conduct, um, and that govern, um, all employees and board members. Uh, the other way we deal with it indirectly, I suppose, is we have a whistleblower policy, so that if any, and a grievance policy, so that if any employee is concerned that there's a conflict that they see in the workplace that they don't think has been appropriately dealt with, then there is the avenue for them to raise it, um, with the protections of, with whistleblower protection if they feel necessary.
Okay. So, so is it your expectation that, um, conflicts of interest should be ra, should be notified to the board?
Uh, e- every conflict of interest, no. Conflicts of interest on the part of directors would certainly be notified to the board. There's a provision for that.
Okay.
Um, I would expect the board to be, become aware of, be notified of a conflict of interest only in circumstances where management, um, saw fit to escalate it to the board because they were concerned about it, um, uh, in a way that they didn't think could be dealt with at management level.
So, so you wouldn't necessarily expect a, um, say, a conflict of interest from a senior inspector, a team leader, a chief inspector that's raised with the CEO to, um, automatically be addressed to the board for their consideration?
No, I'd expect it, no, I would expect it to be dealt with by the person's manager and only escalated if there was some residual concern, um, about it or, uh, there'd been some other misconduct associated with it that was serious. So, I mean, you know, the, the sorts of, uh, process that any manager would go through in deciding what to escalate up the chain and what to, what could be satisfactorily dealt with.
Okay, so in relation to board members themselves, um, to similar processes, is it?
I'm not sure what you mean by similar process.
Well.
Mr. Fang, no, board members are, are asked at every meeting to declare whether they have any interest. Um, and there's a standing register of, um, uh, conflicts, interests that are declared by board members.
Okay.
So that there's complete transparency.
Okay, so, um, if you make a, a annotation in the register as a board member, say you, you make a declaration upfront, you know, I'm, uh, a member of this committee that might be, you know, might have an association with RSPCA, that's filed, put away, not addressed again, or?
No, every board meeting, people are asked to declare whether they have any interest in the business that's gonna be dealt with at that board meeting.
Okay. Um, what if a board member res, well, generates an income from the RSPCA?
Um. That would be an interest that would be declared.
Okay.
In my view.
Yep. Um.
And, and potentially ultimately disclosed in the financial statements.
Is it actually permitted? Can you be a board member and also derive an income from the RSPCA?
You can't derive an income as a director under any circumstances. That's against the constitution.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about honorariums or that. So I'm saying, can, can I, can I provide, can I provide fee for service for the RSPCA? Or I be paid in any way as an employee for the RSPCA and also sit on the board?
Uh, yes, if it was disclosed and, um, the, the person wasn't involved in the decision to engage them for the services in a way that might provide them with a conflict. So I'd say they, they wouldn't be involved.
Is there anyone on the board that currently has that predicament?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Dr. Wright, I was about to come to you. Um, can you, um, provide this committee, um, an indication of, um, you're obviously a vet, you have a veterinary practice in Galburn, I believe?
Yep.
Um, you've provided fee for service to the RSPCA, haven't you?
I have.
How has that been declared?
Well, it's on the list of, um, uh, conflicts of interest. It's declared to the board. It's also declared in the annual report every year.
Okay.
Um, and the engagement is not by, I don't instigate the engagement, that's because I provide veterinary services. That's the role in which I've been employed and it's not necessarily me that's been employed to do it.
And, um, who, who makes the decision to employ your services?
Ben's, who, whom are you talking about in particular?
Well, let's say with the last time you, you provided ser, when did you last provide services to the RSPCA?
Uh, probably last week.
Last week.
Because we, we work in conjunction with the local pound and the local branch in Galburn and we provide discounted dissexing services. And consequently, that's, part of that gets paid by the local government.
Mm-hmm.
Through the, their, their pound, um, and part of it gets provided through the RSPCA, which supports their dissexing programme.
Right. More broadly, um, you would have, I guess, RSPCA inspectors in your area.
Yep.
And I imagine that if they were to confiscate an animal that might need veterinary services, they would have a list of the veterinary, um, providers within the Galburn area that they could attend. Um, how many others, I guess, services would be in the Galburn area that they might be able to, um, utilise?
There's, there's our practice or my practice, if you like, in Galburn, and there's two other practices in Galburn. There's practices at Crookwell, Marullen.
Okay, um. What, what is the, uh, percentage of work that goes to your practice versus the other practices?
I would have no idea. You'd have to ask the inspector or speak to them about that.
Okay, Mr. Wilkie, would you mind taking our notice for me, please? Um, for the last, uh, say, five years, um, the percentage of work that has been, um, generated in that area that has gone to other veterinary practices versus, um, the one that's operated by Mr. Wright, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So that's just on the inspectorate?
Well, I, I know, just all work in general. I, I'm, I'm just curious as to, um, how, like, on, on a dollar amount, how much, um, income is derived, um, from, through your practice, through the RSPCA versus other practices?
Because we have the pound contract, so that's completely independent and that's why we deal with the pound animals.
No, no, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm talking about RSPCA. Um, and I'm also curious as to, um, how, uh, RSPCA inspectors in the area might have been, um, guided by senior management in relation to any, um, issues and, and whether there are com, because there is a clear conflict in relation to a, a selection of your practice versus the other practices in the area, how those are managed, because.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm not clear that the declaration as it currently stands is appropriately managing the conflict.
Happy to take our notice as well.
I might just stop you there and give some other people a go. I might go to Miss Saval and then Miss Hurst and then Miss Boyd and then see how we go.
I've got plenty. I could dizzle all day.
We all do. Yes, we know you can, Wes. Thank you. Thanks so much for making time to appear here today. Um, I might start just with a question to yourself, Dr. Wright. Um, in your opening statement, you mentioned about the significant, um, uplift that you've seen in the inspectorate, um, and significant expansion and the rapid growth. Um, are you able to give us details of how many more activities the RSPCA New South Wales undertook this year in comparison with that uplift, comparison to last?
Um, not, not specific numbers. Um, one of the important things that came about the uplift in the government funding was there was a certain amount that went into equipment work, but the, but the other thing was engaging more inspectors. One of the things we recognised is that the inspectors often are going one-off.
Yeah.
Out in unknown places, and one of the big tasks about, one of our big allocations under that money is was to make it two-up.
Two-up, yeah.
So that the safety of the inspectors and so forth, because many of those people, um, are out there.
Yep.
Alone by themselves and unknown people.
And, and what percent, what percentage of jobs now would you say are being attended as two-out with that uplift?
I have to take that one on notice to give you an exact number.
Sure, that'd be great.
But that's the thing, we intend something like fifteen thousand complaints a year.
Hmm.
So obviously it's, it's, it should be a good number starting. And of course, the other thing is because there's training time, employment time, and the funds weren't allocated till late in the last financial year, we're actually only just starting to achieve that now, and now, of course, we're running out of funding to keep that going.
Um, in terms of the, um, the funding you received, and it may be a question now for the treasurer, so please feel free, um, if it's more appropriate to direct to you. Um, in terms of the, um, inspectorate costs, um, uh, are you aware of, um, the increase in numbers of inspectors over the last financial year with that number in funding? Increase in whole terms?
I'd have to take that on notice, I'm sorry.
I, I think it's a rough doubling.
A rough doubling.
But, but the figures, I think the figures have been provided to the committee in written answers.
For inspectors, it went from thirty-six to fifty-nine full-time equivalents.
Thirty-six to fifty-nine, did you say?
Yeah, like field inspectors and then some additional, um, brief checkers, additional lawyers. Went from a, um, business hours call centre to a twenty-four-seven call centre. Um, so there's also been a lot more animals season last twelve months, so.
So you said there's a twenty-four-seven call centre that's now in operation?
That's right.
Okay.
You've also done a lot more proactive inspections. I'm, I'm aware of that.
Um, in terms of, um, the inspectorate costs, um, I'm just interested in some sort of back-of-the-envelope sums. Um, how much is an, is a, you know, an average inspector, how much is that, would that cost to employ?
I think we'll take it on notice for exact figures, because I mean, obviously, there's from the, the chief down to a new start, team leaders and so forth, they've got different salaries, so I can give you an average on notice or.
I'm looking to, to specifically try and quantify the number, uh, in the, in terms of the uplift, uh, which I understand to be, um, in, in the field of eighteen inspectors. Um, and then the amount of fu, of funding you have received and what the difference there is. So, for example, you received twenty million dollars from the New South Wales State Government for the inspectorate. You've hired an eighteen, sorry, you say twenty-three additional inspectors. Uh, what's the average wage? What was the cost involved for those inspectors and therefore?
And including any uplift in areas such as the call centre as well?
Uh, yeah, that would be great, because we don't have a detailed breakdown of that, that funding and where it's gone in terms of the inspectorate. If it assists you, um, your, the RSPCA New South Wales Inspectorate Award, uh, figures show an inspector entering in on a level one, which a new inspector may, um, as a base rate, which was, this was twenty-twenty figures, so we'll add a bit more on for that. It was sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-four and twenty-seven cents. So say for argument's sake, it's now seventy thousand dollars. Um, and that goes up to level five. There is, of course, your regional allowances, so I was just encouraging you to perhaps try and arrive at some figures as to how much has gone to actual inspectors on the ground and where else that money has gone, because, uh, as it stands, we don't have that information as a committee. It would be very useful.
We can take that on notice and provide you with that information.
Thank you.
Obviously, every time you, every time you add an inspector, you have to train them and equip them.
Yes.
Um, so there, there are add-on costs as well.
Yes, aware of that, yeah.
For back-of-envelope numbers, we actually spent, um, more than the government provided on the inspectorate in the last financial year. So it was twenty-one point two million that was spent on the inspectorate, which breaks down to about twelve million in field operations, about nine hundred grand for prosecutions, about one point nine for the contact centre and about six and a half for animal care and rehab.
What I'm specifically interested in is how many boots on the ground extra did you get last year with the twenty million bucks that you got?
Twenty-one additional inspectors on the ground.
Twenty-one?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll give that. And that's how many you've got at the moment that are all out there going about, hopefully with two of them out there at a time?
Yes.
Correct. Because we have heard evidence that contradicts that directly, so it'd be good to hear that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jo.
Thank you. I'll pass to Miss Hurst.
Thank you. Um, I throw this to anyone, but I just wanted to sort of go back a little bit. I know we've talked a little bit about, um, the board elections, but I was just wondering, is there a board election at every AGM?
Uh, every two years.
Every two years?
Yeah.
One of them occurs.
Every even year.
Okay.
The board is elected in rotation, so I think the whole board doesn't get elected every two years. I, I think there are eight elected directors. Half of them are elected.
Every two years.
Okay, so if you're elected onto the board, you're there for four years and then, and then you'd be up for the next.
And you've got a maximum turn of twelve years.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Um.
And then we have directors who are appointed as well.
What was that, sorry?
We have, we have some appointed directors who, I'm, I'm one of those.
Is that like a casual vacancy, you mean?
No, no. No, it's, uh, it's, um, well, it, it's designed to allow the board to supplement the skills of the board members, uh, where there's felt to be some need to do so, so.
And, and who appoints that person?
The board appoints.
The board i- in sort of a collaboration?
Yeah.
Yes.
And when is that position reviewed?
Um.
Or is it never reviewed? It is. It's, I think, from memory, it's, you can be point co-opted director for one or two years. Yeah. And then obviously it's up to review when, when it comes around again. And it's, for instance, finding someone with a reasonable skill set to look after the risk committee, for instance. Yep. That's how.
And, and what's the makeup of the current board? How many were elected by members and how many were appointed by the board?
There's eight elected, um, and two, two co-op.
We're ten in total, so there's two.
Two appointed. And, and is that kind of variable depending on the skill? Two appointed. And, and is that kind of variable depending on the skill set and decisions of the board generally? Or is there a rule around how many can be appointed?
There's, there's up to four can be appointed, but we actually only provide, obviously focus on, we don't want a board of cast a thousand. So we try to focus on those that fulfil the skills gap. And we generally, at least once or twice a year, oh, sorry, every couple of years at least, do a skills analysis to see where we are lacking skill sets on the board. And if we need to appoint anyone to fill that gap.
Thank you. Um, has the board ever received complaints directly from RSPCA inspectors, say, over the last two years?
Not, not that I'm aware of. Um.
If the board did receive a complaint directly from an inspector, what would be the process of the board to deal with that complaint?
I think it'd depend on the nature of the complaint, Madam Deputy Chair. You know, if, if it was something that was appropriately dealt with through the grievance policy, I suspect we'd encourage them to use the grievance policy. Um, if it was something in the nature of a whistleblower type complaint, then that would be dealt with differently. Um, and if an inspector had a, a reason for wanting to raise it with the board, they were, you know, any, uh, uh, legitimate reason would be listened to and, and dealt with.
And obviously, if necessary too, it would be done in camera, so that, you know, there was no managerial influence, if you like, aft- over the discussion.
If there was a complaint about the CEO from any sort of staff member that went directly to the board, would you consider that the responsibility of the board to investigate a complaint about, say, the CEO?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, when the Department of Primary Industries gave evidence at this inquiry, um, about how complaints or issues involving the inspectorate could be investigated within the RSPCA, um, they said you've got the chief inspector, the CEO and the board, um, that can take actions both internal and externally, um, with reviews of those matters. Um, I'm just wondering, in your opinion, what's the DPI's belief around the board's role in complaints regarding the inspectorate?
It's a bit hard for us to answer for the belief of the DPI and Deputy Chair, um, uh.
Would you agree with that statement?
You've now, you're now talking about complaints about inspectors rather than complaints from inspectors, is that, have I missed?
Um, in, issues involving the inspectorate, so I think it was more broad. It could be complaints coming from the inspectorate. It could be complaints about the inspectorate. Um, I'm just trying to understand whether you agree with the statement that was made by the DPI, that there is a process in place within the RSPCO, sorry, RSPCA, that the board can take action.
Yeah, I think like we're obviously the endpoint of any, that the highest elevation, if there was concerns that could be raised, could be raised with the board. But as I said, I'm unaware of any.
I should say too, I do occasionally, because my email address is, uh, as a professional is available to people. Um, I don't want to encourage this, but I, I do receive, um, occasionally direct communications from people who are aggrieved about something that the inspectorate has done or has not done.
Hmm.
Um, and, um, for myself, I follow those up, um, and satisfy myself that there isn't anything there that hasn't been, has been inappropriately dealt with. Um, sometimes, um, or at least on one occasion I can think of, I've, um, communicated with the person who has the concern. Um, and, um, so that's my, my practice as a director is I wouldn't ignore any communication.
Would you then take that to the board meeting for consideration?
I would if I found, i- i- if my initial inquiries gave rise to concern on my part, then I would escalate that concern.
And does the board, um, regularly receive or get informed about work, um, work, health and safety concerns? Um, is there a sort of a report process where that ends up in the board's, um, minutes or meetings for consideration?
Yeah, that's, those, those concerns are done through the risk committee and the risk committee meets and reports to the board at every meeting.
Okay. And so that would be in the board minutes?
Yeah.
If there were concerns that had come from that committee?
Form part of the board, board minutes.
And that risk committee is made up of board members?
Board members and members of staff, obviously.
Um, we've heard obviously quite, some quite serious sort of concerns raised within this inquiry, um, around inspectors being sent out without, you know, batten and handcuff training, for example. Um, is this something that then has been briefed to the board and considered within some of those board meetings or, well, um, WHNS reports from that risk committee, given that they've come up quite regularly in this inquiry?
Uh.
I don't know, like I.
I, I, I know we've got a safe work notice. I know from reading the evidence from the committee and the answers that have been given, that we received a safe work notice in relation to batten and handcuff training. Um.
So can I just clarify that you didn't know about that until you read the minutes of this inquiry?
I can't recall, Deputy Chair, I don't, I'm not conscious of having been aware of it, um, beforehand, but, um, you know, um, the RSPCA is a big organisation that has lots of moving parts. Um, I would expect the part of the board that would become aware of that would be the risk committee.
Could I ask you to take on notice if there was, just checking over the last couple of years of board minutes, whether that had come to the board's attention previously and, and been raised by that risk committee?
Yeah, well, I'm happy with that, Deputy Chair.
And just let us know either yes, it was raised on this date or no, on reviewing those board minutes. Um, it doesn't seem to have been raised with the board.
Yeah, thank you.
That would be useful. Thank you. Um. Um, I just wanted to ask as well, and, and, and Mr. Wilkie, I'm not sure if you're the best one to answer this, but just in regards to some questions on notice, um, the RSPCA was asked if the Auditor General and the Audit Office of New South Wales have the purview to audit and report on the RSPCA's activities. Um, the reply we had, um, was that the committee contacted the Auditor General for an answer. I'm just wondering, is the RSPCA not actually aware whether they're subject to review by the Auditor General?
I'll take that on notice, um, if that's okay. I think we'd have to ask, like, ru- rules about what they do and don't look into, I guess, would be something that they've, they've got and we can access from them for you on notice.
Thank you. Um, is the board aware at all if, um, if the RSPCA generally is subject to review by the Auditor General?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Um, I also wanted to ask, um, another question on notice, um, was to provide a breakdown of the number of prosecutions in the last five years, um, by the Sydney Metro inspectors versus the regional and rural inspectors. Um, in response to the, my question, the RSPCA didn't provide that information. Um, and instead referred the committee to S thirty-four B, um, report, um, records maintained by the New South Wales Local District and Supreme Courts, um, which is obviously not a particularly useful answer for this committee. Um, the section thirty-four B report only indicates which court of prosecution was actually filed in. It doesn't actually indicate whether the work investigating and initiating that prosecution was done by a Sydney inspector or a regional or rural inspector. Um, and so I wanted to put that back on notice and ask if we could get some more details, um, around that original question.
Yeah, certainly.
So that's, that's with, uh, the regional prosecutions or large animal compared to small animal?
No, no, not that di- level of detail, just literally Sydney Metro, um, inspectorate versus regional and rural inspectorate.
I'm honestly not sure. I don't use the inspectorate system or have access to it, but I'm not sure if it actually does delineate between metro and region. I think we'd have to go through and work out the location of the inspector, search their and their, their history of their inspections and then work out which ones were done in which area. So it would be a.
If it's particularly complicated, can I ask that, um, the communication back to the committee would be, for example, can we look over the last year or the last two years instead of the last five years, rather than sending us to the local courts to try to get that information?
Yeah, certainly. Whatever, if there's a particular time period that's of ease, then we can at least start with that one.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the committee's happy to sort of compromise on i- if that information's going to be too complicated to assess.
I'll find out, yeah.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, also clarify, um, you know, um, Ms. Saval was asking some questions in regards to, um, the wages of, um, the inspectorate. Can I just get a better understanding of, because obviously the funding is for enforcement. Um, wages is one aspect of that. What is the full breakdown of actually enforcing? We heard, like, we've heard things around, um, housing of animals, but can you explain what that means in regards to enforcement, you know, for somebody that's potentially never been in this space?
Well, I think something which, um, kind of surprised me when I first started at RSPCA a couple of years ago is that you've got to actually hold the animal while the case is proceeding. So let's say, um, the inspectors go and do a seizure of a property with, um, thirty dogs. Um, of those dogs, you might have all thirty of them in a very bad way. And so that's going to have veterinary treatment and then ongoing rehabilitation. But for as long as that case is proceeding, they have to get held, um, effectively as property. So it wouldn't be until the case has concluded that they could either be going, uh, back to the person if they were found innocent. Um, but we've got a very, very high success rate and they would then get title to RSPCA, who would then be able to rehome them, um, if suitable. So a, a case can go on for a couple of years. So you've got really high levels of care being given to some of the most neglected and cruelly treated animals that you've ever heard of in all kinds of situations and often on very large volumes, um, that is, is very expensive, both in the vet treatment and the rehab and the care components of that. So, uh, the, the rough figures I was going to before did point out about, uh, six point four million, um, last financial year was on animal care costs out of the twenty-one point two. So it's a really significant portion and it's not one which we can obfuscate either. It's, we, we legally have to hold and care for the animals and ideally we want to rehome all of them. That isn't always possible, but you want to rehome absolutely as many as possible. And that's a really expensive task if they've been mistreated, um, in all kinds of, uh, physical and psychological ways.
Thank you. Um, and I've just got one more question, uh, for Dr. Wright around, um, remuneration received. I'm wondering, um, within those declarations, do you also declare the amount of remuneration that you receive from any, um, work that you do on behalf of the RSPCA?
Oh, I, I haven't actually done it, but they're obviously, it, it could be easily found.
Uh, are you able to provide on, um, on notice for us, um, the amount of remuneration that you have received, um, from the RSPCA while also holding a position on the board?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Over the top timeframe.
Um, and so you've been on the board for about twenty-two years, is that right?
Yeah.
Um, that would be useful.
That would be a challenge. I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Uh, I might pass to Ms. Boyd.
Thank you. Just, um, I don't have a huge number of questions, cause a lot of them have been asked, which is great. Um, thank you for your attendance.
I've got plenty, sure.
Uh, I know you do. Um, I just wanted to turn to the, so my understanding is you've had the same CEO in place for seventeen years, is that correct?
That sound, doesn't sound wrong.
Okay. Um, does it?
Sounds wrong to me.
Does it strike you as unusual to have a CEO of an organisation for such a long period of time?
Um.
Well, I'll, I'll start and I'm sure the other, can be, other board members, they have some comments as well, but, um, Steve has been with the organisation for a lot longer than even I have. So he's actually very familiar with all the processes and so forth. Um, all the through that, his tenure as both as when he was, um, what do they used to call him? Deputy, deputy CEO, I think at one stage. Um, he's undergone periodic review, which is be every twelve, twenty-four months. Sometimes it'd been fully external. Sometimes it'd be purely internal. Um, sometimes it's been, you know, uh, done within the board level. So there's been a varying amount of review of his position. Um, at all times, he's been found to be satisfactory. Um, and he has, where he was in terms of being a CEO and what he was doing twelve years ago compared to what he's doing now, they've become and evolved as the organisation has evolved going through.
Sure. Sorry, that sounds like a very defensive answer. I.
Oh, no, it's.
What I'm, sorry, just let, let me just clarify, cause I think, you know, we had this discussion when we were talking about, um, boarding on the Racing New South Wales Board. Like, it's not about the merit of the individual. From a, from an overall corporate governance perspective, um, it's seen as being bad practice to have a CEO in place for a period of time. Um, because of, um, the sort of, I guess, a unique culture that develops under that CEO, the accrued power that they achieve just by virtue of having been there for a long period of time. Um, and the, the fact that you miss out on getting fresh pairs of eyes in to have a look at things and do things differently. Why has the board decided not to open up a recruitment process to look for? You know, I, I hear what you're saying about reviews and that's great, but why as a organisation of such standing, you haven't opened up that process to see if there are other applicants for the CEO position?
I'm not sure, Boyd, that it's a principle of good corporate governance to change your CEO regularly. Um, to take.
Well.
To take us, to take a, uh, uh, a CEO that's functioning extremely competently and an organisation that is, uh, to my observation, um, uh, well-run and effective and shake it up, uh, by changing the senior management, um, I, I, I would hesitate to do that as a board member.
But what are you comparing their performance to?
Well, I see the, Mr. Fang can't wait to, to get into this.
I know.
Um, uh, uh, I have co- I have contact, because I'm on the board of RSPCA Australia, with the other member societies around the federation. So I see something through that role.
Yep.
Of their management and we visit their operations from time to time as well. So in part, an answer to your question is I compare it to the functioning and operations of the other member societies of the RSPCA.
Okay, which is, which is something. And I heard, um, Dr. Wright compare his performance to his performance twelve years ago. And I, I can totally understand that someone who's been in that role that long.
I get, I get feedback regularly as a director, directly from staff and volunteers and managers. And I'm not just talking about senior level managers, but managers at all levels of the organisation, um, as to, uh, their job satisfaction and the way in which they feel they're being managed. Um, and I have, uh, never had any reservations based on that about the functioning of management of the RSPCA in New South Wales.
Without opening up recruitment on a regular basis, I'm, I, I struggle to understand how you can compare, um, uh, what the alternative to that person could be. And I think you're sort of underlining my point for me because we talk in corporate governance terms about that sort of cult of the individual and how dangerous that is for an organisation in terms of, um, the dampening effect that has over time on fresh ideas, on people standing up when they don't like something that they're seeing, e- everything else. You don't, so I guess are you telling me you've never thought about having a different CEO? You're just gonna wait until there's a.
I don't know, we worry.
Bad performance before you.
No, we think about succession, for example, because as a risk, as a matter of corporate risk, you need to think through what's going to happen if the CEO, uh, leaves or.
Just jump in, Mr. Thompson. Don't put your hand up. Just jump straight in. Charles, the answer.
Oh, there's no, there's no answer. Sorry. If, if you finish, you're happy for it. Yeah, um.
Because he's an SC, doesn't mean you have to.
No, I know, I know, I know. No, listen, um, the, the, the concept of, you know, good corporate governance, um, you know, a- and, and where it is, is, is an interesting one and obviously subject to debate. Um, and, uh, the principles applied to the corporate environment, particularly the public company environment, may be very different to reality of a not-for-profit organisation. Uh, in, in my experience, uh, i- i- in, in my career, I've, I've dealt with both, uh, both styles of organisation. And one of the challenges that you always find, uh, in the not-for-profit environment is getting people that really understand the cause, because the cause is important. Um, not, it's not in a corporate environment, it's about maximising your return to shareholders.
Hmm.
And that's a very different principle. Um, I have had some exposure to RSPCA New South Wales through my, i- i- you know, through my professional relationships, um, over probably ten years. And my understanding is very clearly that the CEO's current role today and the structure that sits beneath him is very different to what it was ten years ago. And so, um, I mean, I suppose as a board member today, uh, CEO's ability to build and change his, his role probably would have been one of the aspects. probably would have been one of the aspects uh which would allow the board comfort today that 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 uh person um has not sort of outlived their their useful life in terms of their skills and ability, yeah, and and but similarly
We're not putting him out to pasture. It's a
No, 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 no.
Can I, can I ask you though, um so how did you come to be on the board? Who approached you?
Uh I was uh previous, had a previous business relationship with Brian Pickup, who was the previous treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
He had reached an age where he had uh decided to scale back his operations, uh his activities, professional activities, and uh he approached the board to resign, and they requested a referral to someone that he knew that might be a suitable candidate
Yep.
to join the board. Uh so after in, after a briefing with him, and then I met Peter Wright, uh and I was able to access, look at the organisation, both in terms of brand and financial stability and the like, um given that I've, my interest is the financial side.
Um did you meet with Mr Coleman before accepting the job?
I met with Mr Coleman and I also met with this CFO, Julian, uh as part of the process of acceptance, yes.
Um can I ask you, Mr Steele, how you came to be a board member?
I believe my wife, as Paul, um uh I have, uh my wife and I have for a long time been interested in the um in animal welfare. Um I was, a- and she has been engaged with the R S P C A, New South Wales for more years than I have. Um she helped with the education team, she's helped with fundraising. Um and uh on the occasion when this this um legislative council had an inquiry uh into whether it was appropriate for the inspectorate function to continue to be part of charitable organisations. So what was that, four or five years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Um uh we became aware, my wife became aware that that was coming up and that it was an important matter for the R S P C A, and uh knowing my skills, she volunteered me um to help with the preparation of submissions and evidence for that inquiry. Um which I did, I was not on the board, I did all that work pro bono, and in the course of doing it, I learnt a lot about R S P C A, New South Wales, and I met a lot of the people from R S P C A, New South Wales.
Okay.
I continued to do pro bono work for them thereafter.
Yep.
And at some point, um I was invited to join the board.
Who invited you?
Clarify, is is your wife a life mem- is is your wife a member of the board also?
She is, yeah.
Who invited you to join the board?
I think it was Doctor Wright.
It was, indeed.
Mm-hmm. Um I will hand over in one second.
And then the board, I suppose formally speaking, met in my absence and in my wife's absence uh and um appointed me, um provision under the constitution.
I'll just ask a final question. One of the the reasons why um I've been focusing on the length of tenure of the CEO and why I pointed out as being relatively unusual and a red flag in organisations where that has been the case, um is, you know, the academic literature and the sort of best practice guidelines point to the dangers of a CEO effectively um managing the board rather than the other way around. Um obviously, we need the board to be incredibly independent, but when you're so reliant on somebody who is so embedded in the organisation as your CEO, it can put at risk that sort of good governance structure. Do you believe that you are, as a board, adequately able to oversee the work of your CEO?
Yes. I don't feel managed, and I'm, uh I think I'd know if I was being, and I'm not. Um there's something I wanted to add as well, as Paul, to one of the points that um our treasurer made is that not-for-profits aren't, don't function in quite the same way in many ways as um business corporations. And one thing that occurred to me in the context of that is that one thing Steve's tenure has, brings to us, which is um uh of considerable value, is that he has built up relationships over time with donors and supporters and people who we know uh have left us, are leaving us money in their wills. Um and uh he works hard, from my observation, to maintain relationships with those people, which over time have become personal relationships.
Yeah.
You know, he commonly uh calls on people we know are major benefactors or um have left us major requests in their wills to make sure they are, they feel engaged and embraced by the organisation.
Again, you're underlining my my point for me. This is how we end up with so much power in one individual, and this has been the downfall of many a not-for-profit organisation, so I hope I just, I flagged it to you now.
I I would shudder to think that those relationships would be lost. Um but that doesn't give him, uh we manage our CEO, it doesn't give him power over us.
At all. You don't think that that's any kind of implicit power? It doesn't need to be nefarious power. It's the fact that somebody is so valuable. So it's a key personnel risk.
Any, any invaluable employee is invaluable.
And that's one of the reasons why, I think that's one of the reasons why we're focused as a board. Uh certainly since I've joined the board, there's been a lot of discussions about succession and making sure. And I said earlier, I've got some understanding of the operations of R S P C A probably over the last decade through my other business relationships, and my understanding is that the management team that sits within the organisation today compared with what it was ten years ago is substantially different. Um and certainly as a board, since I've joined, we discuss regularly our need to make sure we've got succession because of that, you know, you call it a risk that there might be of reliance on one individual uh within the organisation. But, I mean, yeah.
I just have two quick questions before I pass to other. I'll change my mind. Chair's prerogative. Just on on notice perhaps, how many of the board members have come up uh through what I would call the traditional sense of joining a board, I guess through the branch structure or the the individual membership structure? How many of them have come up through, I guess, that sort of process where they've been put forward by their branch as a good candidate for the board and then uh been nominated and accepted? I don't expect you to recall now, if you don't, but perhaps on notice of the current board, how many uh have come up through that traditional sense?
Can I rephrase the question?
I was happy with mine.
How many people have been no, uh elected to the board that haven't been approached or nominated by somebody that's previously been on the board or by the CEO?
Yeah, I I'd accept that rephrasing. Take it on notice. Yeah, sure, yeah. Um Mr Wilkie, um you've been sitting there patiently. Senior Government Relations Manager, obviously that means you liaise with government, but I imagine that extends to opposition and cross-bench.
Yes.
So with this inquiry, how have you or any other uh employees of R S P C A um that have appeared before this committee engaged with members or committee members outside of the conventional sense of engagement with the committee, i.e. through the committee secretary? So have you sought to see or speak to or communicate with any committee member, or actually, in fact, any member of parliament regarding this inquiry outside of the normal process of going through the committee secretary?
I think I've spoken to most of the members of the committee.
About this, about this specific inquiry, not just generally speaking?
About this, well, the inquiry has come up in conversation with multiple members of parliament, both of of this committee and otherwise.
Have you or any other committee, have you or any other people that have appeared before this committee sought to seek information about how the uh how the committee is deliberating or potentially seek to find out what questions may be asked um
Witnesses are appearing.
Process or seek to get information in advance of appearing before this committee or or having to answer questions?
Um again, I've asked it of members of the committee and other members of parliament if there's any particular concerns they've got both before and after hearings that have taken place.
Have any of the other members that have appeared done similar things? For example, has any other, have any committee, have any of your employees asked committee members uh or given committee members a set of Dorothy Dixon questions to ask back to them?
I don't
Ask back to you?
I don't have any employees.
Well, R S P C A.
Have you given anybody on this committee questions to ask you? You're under oath, I'll remind you.
Um I'm aware of that, I'm uh I can think of multiple people where I've suggested themes that you would hope come up or ask what themes are going to come up.
Do you have a, say, a disappearing WhatsApp message set up with anybody on this committee that you might send messages to them on?
I think I've got most of this committee's phone number.
That's not the question I asked. Do you send, um or have you got a disappearing WhatsApp um message with somebody on this committee that you would send messages to them during a hearing?
Uh I don't think I've messaged anyone during any hearings.
You haven't messaged anyone on this committee during a hearing with using disappearing WhatsApp messages?
Not that I recall.
Not that you recall? I'll ask you to, I'll ask you to be very clear about that. Have you sent disappearing WhatsApp messages to anybody on this committee during the conduct of the hearing?
Not that I recall.
Okay.
Do have any other members that have, any other employees that have appeared before this committee? Have they sought to give Dorothy Dixon questions or seek information during an inquiry hearing? Can you take it on notice?
Not that I'm aware of.
Can you take it on notice and ask them, because I can't obviously ask them because they're not here? Can you ask them, of all the ones that have appeared, have they been seeking to seek information from the committee as the inquiry hearing is actually ongoing?
Sure.
Thank you. Mister, sorry, I'll go to Mr Val, because he's actually got one quick question, and we'll throw to you at the end.
And mine will be quick. Um my question to Doctor Peter Wright, and apologies, I should have asked this before, I I neglected to. Um in terms of the two-out numbers that you referred to in your earlier answer, would it be reasonable uh for, to require the R S P C A to provide their two-out figures as, say, K P I's?
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm sure to take it on notice, you know, to find out what the figures are, and obviously, at the moment, they're obviously transitioning into that roles at the moment, so I'll more than happy to find where we're at.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Mr Feng.
Thank you. Um just before I go to the other questions that I had, I'm going to ask you one last time, Mr Wilkie. Um noting that you are under oath and you acknowledge that you are under oath and that you would be breaching the Parliamentary Evidence Act if you are lying um and you'd be committing perjury, um have you sent disappearing WhatsApp messages to anybody that's on this committee during the committee's hearings, asking the questions to be asked?
Not that I recall.
Not that you recall? Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you mean just current, like, these members, or do you mean other people who have been on?
The men are the, the members that are on this committee during any of the hearings that we had during the, the inquiries that are occurring.
Well, can I, can I, let's not leave this hanging. Have you ever sent any disappearing or non-disappearing WhatsApp or any other social media message to me um as a member of this committee at any time about any matter to do with this committee?
Not that I recall, no.
Well, I can tell you you haven't, because I I certainly would recall, because, but um but to the best of your knowledge, you you haven't.
That's right.
Okay.
Um have have you ever sent me one?
Don't feel let down.
Don't want to let this hang.
It's not a favouritism, I promise.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to seek some advice from the clerks before I, um but, okay, uh Matt, well, um with, I'll I'll ask you for this, or the um, or the Brumbies, the Ariel Culling and Brumbies Inquiry, have you done it for either one of those?
Not that I recall.
Not that you recall? So, so your answer that you gave previously also stands for the Ariel Culling and Brumbies Inquiry as well?
Yep.
Okay. Um I just want to turn now, Doctor Wright, to um the grievance policy that you spoke about earlier that um staff can engage with, uh or maybe Mr Steele.
I think it was me, Mr Steele.
Um uh that that staff can engage in. Um Mr Bearden gave us some evidence um in the first of the inquiries, who said that um there had been thirty-six complaints in total um in the previous twelve months um at the time that he gave the evidence. Uh do you know how many of those were upheld?
Um I've uh read the evidence, Mr Fang, which was that four were substantiated.
Yes.
Four um occasions, I don't know whether, if I can put it that way, complaints. Um I'm not saying that's for complainants, I I think, um I'm not at all clear about that, but there were four substantiated um matters.
Yeah, out of thirty-six. So, I mean, it's just a little tick over ten percent of the the complaints that were made were
I'm not sure that's a useful parameter, but
Well, it it is when I guess um I'm looking at uh what the likelihood is that your staff might use the grievance policy, given that, you know, um say, one in ten, you know, give or take a a few is upheld.
I mean, some of those, a- as I understand it, Mr Fang, from my discussions with the head of H R about this, um some of those, um you know, one complainant might make fifteen complaints, about fifteen different occasions, um two of which might be upheld, but I don't think that's a useful measure of whether um the process is working effectively.
Okay. Um let's look at the thirty-six then. So it may be that it's thirty-six different people with one complaint each, or it may be three people with
No, I don't think, well, I I I think there was more information given in the evidence than that. I think that uh I'd have to refresh my recollection, but I don't think it's thirty-six people
No.
making one complaint.
No. So in relation to that then, as a board, do you receive I guess, a breakdown of the complaints that are made, the number of people that are making complaints, the investigation process that occurs and what is upheld and what action is taken?
Uh at that level of detail, no, unless we, unless we inquire.
Do you think you should?
Which I have done.
Okay. Um it was
I think, no, I, you asked
Yeah.
Do you want me to answer whether, I think we should.
Yeah.
Um I think workplaces um like ours, which have, we have five hundred and sixty employees,
Mm-hmm.
Um we have three thousand volunteers
Mm.
um who are also covered by the grievance policy.
Mm-hmm.
Um uh the idea that uh the board should be, become aware of every single grievance and the investigation that was made into it and how it was resolved is is um too much, Mr Fang. If if, I would expect as a board member that if the pattern of grievances and the way they were resolved uh indicated some systemic issue with either the policy or with workplace satisfaction, that that would be brought to the attention of the board and that we would address it. Um which is why when these complaints were, came up in this context, um as a director, I went out of my way to inquire whether there was any basis for concern for me as a director or the board, that there was a systemic issue of workplace culture at R S P C A, New South Wales. Um and I made uh inquiries about that, not just of the CEO across management.
Yep.
I looked at the figures for staff turnover, uh the figures for grievances. Um I looked at the workplace satisfaction surveys that have been conducted.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I called on my own knowledge of engaging with workplace participants.
Yep.
Um and I satisfied myself that there was no evidence of a systemic, toxic workplace culture
Okay.
at R S P C A, New South Wales.
Are you
I found that there was a large number of grievances reported, a historically large number of grievances by the inspectorate in the last six months or so.
Hmm.
That's what I I found, and I inquired, and I can, uh if you're interested, I can tell you what I concluded. But I inquired into what might be causing that
Hmm.
um and whether that was in, uh the board should be concerned, I as a director and the board should be concerned that there was something about the workplace culture in the inspectorate that we needed to be concerned about.
Are you aware that um Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that was one of the answers that was given.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr Chair.
Apparently, yeah, according to answers uh given by your organisation, it's this inquiry that's causing all this workplace issues.
Um I think that, uh uh sorry, I, you didn't ask me a question.
I'm going to table um one other piece of advice, sorry, one other piece of evidence if I could. Um are you aware that there was um a meeting that was held with the inspectorate um staff and management um on the thirtieth of May uh twenty twenty-four? So just over a month and a half ago? And management, um, on the thirtieth of May, uh, twenty twenty-four, so just over a month and a half ago?
Um. At that level of specificity, no.
No, okay, um, related to, I guess, concerns that, that staff have had, um. Uh, I'm just talking about this in broad terms, but, um, I guess a lo- a number of issues were raised, um, in relation to. Uh, reporting that's, that's occurred, um, the way that staff are feeling, that they've been treated by the management. Um, and, uh, I guess evidence that was given in inquiries, uh, before the legislative council committees. Both the, um, the inquiry into Ariel Culling and also this inquiry, uh, into Pockta. Um, so you've been given no briefing about that meeting at all?
Um, I'm, I'm confused now, Mr Feng, that, uh, you're, you're telling me.
Yes.
To assume that there was a meeting on the thirtieth of May between who and who?
Between, uh, inspectorate staff and management of R S P C A.
Well, I'd, I'd expect there'd be meetings like that every day, a- at that level of generality, if you want to be more specific, I can.
I encourage you to, because we're right on time, so.
All right, can we go a bit over?
I'm, just a couple of minutes, but you're pushing it.
All right, um, well, let me, let me, um, raise with you in general terms, um, and you might wanna take this on notice. Uh, but it was suggested at that meeting, my understanding, that with multiple attendees. That Mr Coleman, um, had given evidence to the committee in order to. Um, I'll paraphrase here, but to shut me up, um, in relation to some of the questions I was asking. Um, related to the inspection of the downside property in Wogga. Um, and I've given to you, um, in highlight notes, um, the answers that were given in relation to inspection of. The cool room, um, it is my belief that Mr Coleman has deliberately perjured himself. Uh, in relation to these answers, as a board, how would you feel? If your CEO is proven to have perjured himself at an inquiry by giving false answers to this committee?
Well, I'd obviously be concerned.
And what action would you take?
As a serious matter. What action would I take?
Yes.
Am I assuming a conviction for perjury or an allegation of perjury? Or, um, what are you asking me to assume?
Well, let's go with an allegation for the moment, would you take any action at all?
Uh, an allegation by whom?
Well, I'll, by me.
Based on what's written here?
Yes.
What action would I take?
Yes.
I would review with the CEO the answers that he gave to see if I could, if there was any basis, as it appeared to me.
Okay.
That the answers were deliberately false.
Given that we are short of time, um, I will ask you, uh, if you could take on notice. Um, if you could do that and reply to us within twenty-one days, the response of the CEO before I ask him to be recalled.
I, I, I'm sorry, I need to be very clear about this because this is very serious allegation.
Appreciate that.
What is it that you're asking me to?
Can I, can I help, Mr Steele?
Yes.
The answer that he gave on this date on twenty-third of May, where he said, in hindsight, it would be better, that they should have actually. Entered the cool room and inspected it, we are of the understanding that is contrary to information that is. Uh, given to the inspectorate staff at a meeting on the thirty-first.
Thirtieth.
Thirtyth of May, where he said that he only said this to shut Mr Feng up. Which then, that would then imply that this is a false and misleading statement to the committee. Because it was only said to shut Mr Feng up, not necessarily a true reflection or true answer. To the question, so.
This is a state, I'm, I'm not caviling with what you're saying.
No.
I'm just trying to understand it, this is a statement of opinion.
Hmm.
Um, uh, and so the, the allegation is.
He's then now offered.
The opinion was not genuinely held.
Yes.
Um, all right, well, I will, um, make inquiries about that, but I'm not, I'm not an investigator on behalf of the committee.
I don't expect, we don't expect you to.
No, you offered.
No, no, I, you asked me what I would do and I said, that's what I would do as a response.
I know, and I'm, yes.
I didn't say that I was.
And I'm making, I'm making the allegation now, I said, what would happen if I made the allegation, you said what you would do, I'm asking you to do it.
Well, I will do that, but am I being asked for anything else or not?
No, no, just twenty-one days.
Do you want to just take it on notice as to what the, what the.
The twenty-one days is you want me to report back to the committee.
Yes.
On the results of my, I'm not sure this is a proper, this isn't a question.
You offered it.
I, I, I beg to differ, Mr Feng, if you, you're asking me to make an investigation. And report back to the committee on the results of my investigation, I'm not sure that's within the powers of this committee.
That Mr Coleman may have given falsely misleading evidence. We're asking you to seek a response from Mr Coleman on that accusation, if, that we are now putting.
And report back to you.
Or through the board? Through the board, yes.
Well, I'll, I'll, I will make inquiries as a director, but that, that is all I will do, if you, if this committee wants to make. Serious allegations of perjury against somebody, then this is not the way to do it in my view.
We are merely seeking information, he can come back with a clarification.
Well, I, I, you say that, I think in fact what's happening is a serious allegation is being made. In a way that does not accord Mr Coleman natural justice.
Well, we're, we're providing him an opportunity to seat up and, and come back with a clarification as to how. How this evidence is not contrary to what he said at a meeting on the thirtieth of May.
We'll take this discussion on notice.
Yeah.
Mr Chair and we'll, and we'll give you a response.
Yeah.
But it may not be the result of my inquiries.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you, all right, um. Well, that concludes our time, you have taken some substantial stuff on notice, we thank you for, for your time today. Um, the secretary will be in touch, uh, just in terms of the list of those questions you have taken on, on notice. Um, with a timeframe to get back to us, so thank you very much for your time, thank you.
Thank you.